All right. It is that time I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Glencoe Board of Trustees held at 7:00 PM on July 14th at Glencoe Town Hall for the roll call. Terry?
Here.
Skip?
Here.
Susan?
Here.
Shawna is here. Item three, consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting held on June 9th. Approval of the general fund purchase orders, cemetery fund purchase orders, police fund purchase orders, municipal court purchase orders, metered fund purchase orders, renewal of the 2025-2026 Crosswalk Guard Agreement with Glencoe Public Schools, and approval of time off requested by the office assistant. Any questions over in the board? Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Item four is new point. Item five, public appearances, petitions, demonstrations, communications, and personal appearances. Is there anything out there that is not on the agenda?
Yeah. I want that lot at 315 Webb, at Webb in Oklahoma. The drainage, there's no longer a ditch there. So whenever it rains, I basically get, I don't know, like half an acre of that lot flooded. And so does the surrounding properties. I just kind of try to see if we can get some ditches dug or something. Because I'd like to make that property like nice and get some homeless community. But I can't really do that until I turn, you know, that part of the town into a hall.
Understood. So we can, I can see if the county can look at it, if we'll put it on the next agenda to see what kind of action we can take, but I'll.
Is it city property?
It is, yes. However, the county does most of the road maintenance type stuff. We have a contract with the county to do an interlocal cooperative agreement that they'll come in and install culverts or work drainage. We just don't have the equipment at the town level or the time and manpower to be able to do it all.
If I do it myself, can I just do it?
I think that would have to be a discussion of the board. I mean, on your property, you can do what you want on your property. But within city right of way and the city street, if the culvert is the issue crossing the street.
The issue on that was culverts are still there. No one's, like, and this is all the city property right here. No one's maintained it where all the water actually drains. I just want to re-dig the ditches so that my property doesn't flood. And I don't, I don't really want to wait months on this.
I mean, the thing is, if it's city right of way, we are the ones responsible for it. And I don't know that we want, not that, I'm not saying that you're not comp, that you dig a ditch.
You don't need, you don't need to worry about that. I don't know why you should not think I am.
If we let one person dig a ditch, we're going to let everybody dig a ditch on the city right of way and then we have an issue. But I believe we're going to have to have a special meeting in the next couple of weeks, correct? So, I mean, it may be something that we have more of an idea in the next couple of weeks to be able to address, at least the city portion of it.
Okay. Would there be some type of timeline to a resolution?
I mean, I think that that's where we would have to bring it back to the board whenever we do our special meeting and have open board discussion about what the resolution would be. Being that it's not an agenda item, we can't make a decision on it.
All right.
My, right.
Correct.
Right after the special meeting, so it's something that.
Yes, we should know in the next couple of weeks, whenever we have our special meeting.
Well, just keep me posted on it.
Okay. Unless if you'll keep it posted on that. There, then, firing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So the other thing that we will, we discovered, or did we just do that already business?
You can do it there.
Okay, we'll wait until we do this. Okay, anything else that's not on the agenda and not foreseeable? Okay, we'll move on to item six, consideration discussion and possible action concerning the ditch and culvert located at 423 West Shepherd. And this would be Ms. Paulus' property. Same thing floods excessively whenever the rain comes. Have we hydroged that, Shane? Have we hydroged that? Don't we have the hydro jet to be able to judge that culvert?
Hers.
Yeah?
Hers is.
Okay.
It's, that's not her. I did go through and do hers a while back. And she also had Cordell do some digging. She's done quite a bit of stuff herself. But, and the county's done something in the past, or somebody did something in the past that I think I helped, but she didn't take it. There's a new culvert in just across from her. So that her culvert, her ditches could be used more to be dug out. But also across the street to bobbies to, there are some things that needs to be addressed right there to get it, to want to go that way. But it can be fixed down there, but it's going to take some, maybe transit, maybe a little knowledge and to get it, to get it, let it back out for, but it's, it is awful.
So is that something we want to try to reutilize county hours to attempt to address?
Yeah. We don't have transit. We can get one, we can borrow one, but we don't.
Well, and a person that, a person that can look at it, probably could.
Yeah.
What are, what are our lines like in the area? Do we have water lines, gas lines to contend with?
They're pretty, all our lines are pretty, right in that, right in that vicinity out there. And we are in, we also need to see where. Probably just need to turn in some locates and see what's where. I mean, what kind of utility we're doing there. But I think some ditches can be cut going down backwards. I think, I think it's supposed to go down backwards to the west. I know I've looked at it. It can be fixed, I don't, I think Paula said that would be better. Because that probably makes you probably play. Give her teeth, she can, she's looking at it about.
Look at my pictures.
Yeah. No, the pictures are very clear, that there's an issue. Sorry, you guys good?
Yeah, let's see what we can.
You'll make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we, on the slide item, get the county involved and see what they can do.
Second. Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Item seven, consideration discussion and possible action concerning approval of Justin Goodwin as a new member of the Glencoe Volunteer Fire Department. Is that you back there?
Yeah.
You're going to stand up and tell us a little bit about yourselves?
There's not too much to tell. I've been around Oklahoma a lot, I've been all over Oklahoma. Stillwater's only 27 miles from home. And James, as far as I know, James, he told me about fire department. It's something that we kind of really like. And that boy's been really good.
So I see you live in Stillwater. What is your, what is your timeframe, with all due regard, to get to the station?
I agree with that.
I mean, like legally, what, like, what are we talking about?
He lives right there at Washington or Virginia. So it's not too far.
Oh, yeah, that's not too far.
Yeah.
Not too far. Have any experience firefighting, medical? Are you interested in doing all the fun, medical? Great.
He's got good skills. He's paid at the Holiday Inn instead.
Jay Fujak, explain that.
Yeah. I figured to make somebody smile.
It is cute, yeah.
So. But I've known him for a couple of years, just get you in. He said he worked my life, he's really good worker. Looking around, we are.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we accept Justin's one line item seven. As volunteer. Arvin?
I'll say that.
Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Hope stay.
Shawna votes yes. Congratulations and best of luck. Item eight, consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving the arena board's purchase of a 12-by-16 concession building not to exceed $5,125. Do you have any information on that said building?
I don't have any information. That might be on John.
That is the first of two projects that we figured. That con, that, that stand is what's going to make money right now. Now, the city's going to make revenue off of them renting revenue. Any gate money is going to have to go towards prize monies to be able to draw these, these crowds. That concession stand is the only thing we've got to actually put the money back supporting the road.
We did budget.
Right.
Yeah. Just whatever money.
So I'm going to assume that this is merely just your shell. This is no.
It has no installation, no electric, it's built. Yeah. It's, it's just the shell.
And you think you'll be able to finish it out with the rest of the budgeted amount?
We'll do the best we can.
Good. Any discussion on that at all? I will make a motion that we approve the arena board's purchase of a 12-by-16 concession building not to exceed $5,125. Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Number nine, consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving the arena board's purchase of an arena groomer not to exceed $3,740. And again, that was a budgeted item, wasn't it?
I don't believe that was, but, I mean, they, what did I say? I was going to say they still have a material and supply that they're utilizing now, but.
I thought that was one of their.
What is an arena groomer?
Well, the arena groomers just go in and work and work at level.
Oh, okay.
And we've got some individuals that are, we've got individuals that want to put on a lot of barrel racing competitions. You go to one of those, every fifth run, they're out there smoothing their end. Because they dig troughs at the end of the game if you don't.
I think that's very special.
And you look big, it's almost as bad as that.
Yeah. Well, and you get that reputation on stuff, huh? Quick and in a hurry. Any questions from up here in regards to that?
Mm-hmm. I'm good.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the arena board's purchase of an arena groomer not to exceed $3,740. Second. Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning approval of the increase of the burial marking fee for the municipal cemetery's from $25 to $35.
The arena board had a meeting a couple of weeks ago and they just decided that they wanted to raise the marginal fee from the 25 to 35. Is there any stipulations on the 25?
Cemetery.
She meant cemetery.
Yeah.
What did I say?
The arena board. I was like, the arena board is getting with the markings now.
The marking for what?
Yeah. So where does that $35 go?
It just goes straight into their budget. We put it into the general fund and it's earmarked for cemetery marking fee.
It's still cheaper than normals.
Oh, absolutely.
A 0.5% dosage to that new, I'm going to cater for, with home state statute.
Yes. That's an issue. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the increase of the burial marking fee for the municipal cemeteries from $25 to $35.
I'll say that.
Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning approving and updating municipal cemeteries, rules, and regulations.
So we just updated that ordinance to match the state statute.
Any discussion on that at all?
Mm-hmm. It's updated to the state statutes.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the updated municipal cemetery's rules and regulations as per the second. Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Consideration discussion and possible action concerning the proposal for notification system for the town of Glencoe from TextMyGov. You guys want to chat on this?
Well, this is mine. I have a lot of companies that will reach out to us, try and get us to get notification systems or set up our websites, and they're just ridiculously expensive. I'm just going to build our website. But as for the notification side of things, they put together a proposal that will allow each of the department heads to have a user fire department too. This will be useful for them for getting out notifications. They give us like 10,000 text messages a month. And we can set up automatic responses, like if somebody says, when is the fireworks show? We put in the keywords and it'll prompt automatically responding to them. If Shane has a leak here in town, we can go in and we can notify everybody who has a text that are set up, let them know what's going on. If it's an isolated incident, you can go in on the interactive map and just circle where those people are and send them those text messages. I think it's useful right now. My way of notifying people is Facebook or my work phone and sending a thousand text messages every time the water is off. But the price, I think it comes out to 125 a month. I think it could be split between like general fund and public works. But. Yeah, I think it would be really good, obviously, because.
I think there's a lot of levels. Like the county just put in a program today that is very similar, but a much, much, much hefty your price tag.
I, I wiggled it down.
The, the five-year price tag on the one the county just put in today was $65,000.
Oh, my gosh. And when I did finish the website, you can pay the power, how much it is extra to put the widget on the website. So when they go in, it pops up on the screen and it gets everyone prompted to sign up. When we sign the contract, if and when we sign the contract, they take the first like three business days and they reach out to everyone in town and they try to get like, eh, up to 80 or 90% of Glencoe signed up for me. So I don't have to do all that work. And for that much money, they shouldn't have to, so. I think of all of the companies that I've talked with, this is the only one I was willing to bring to you guys. I think it would be useful, especially, especially for the fire department. I really do. Would they be able to notify, you know, county customers for fire subscriptions that are due? I mean, for 12 months? I just think it would be super helpful, really.
So the initial is $2,250.
Yeah. That, there's.
And that will, that's them getting everything set up, everything going. And then after the year one, it's 1,500. Did they talk about what their actual year's increases look like?
They told me there wasn't. I mean, there's the standard. It said they won't be more than 5%, but they didn't say it was every year. So that might be something that the board was signed agreement, we just verify that.
Well, and, and most of the time, if we push back on that, they, they tend to come down off of that, so.
I did get them to come down a little bit because the first price they brought to me was like right at 2,500 for the year. I managed to wiggle it down a little bit, so I'm pretty happy with it.
I think it'd be a great idea.
I know the business is in town, especially.
How, how do you feel, Shane, on the public works side?
Yes, I, I think this is a good idea. I think. I'll also get those.
CA, you have.
There's nothing that would suggest that.
No, never. Do you have any input on thoughts about?
I think if you study all around.
I think it'd be good.
Yeah.
I'm good with it. I think I'm good.
And it's only.
Got a motion.
Um, you know, open it to thought working, and step out of the contract.
Well, that's usually the three-year contract. It says on the terms, it said, this is a three-year term.
Yeah, exactly. You can give a 30-day, yeah, a 30-day notice. But I imagine if we were to give them a 30-day, they'd probably do whatever they could to keep us around. I like the idea.
I'll make a motion on line item 12 that we accept the service that my text gov is going to give the city.
Second. Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. Item 13, consideration discussion and possible action concerning adopting ordinance number 5-2025 and ordinance amending section 1-71 of chapter one of the Glencoe Town Hall providing appointment term for cemetery board members, section 1-75 of chapter one of the Glencoe Town Hall for the cemetery care fund, and section 1-81 of chapter one of the Glencoe Town Hall, Town Code, to provide a price for site and declaring it an emergency.
That was a lot. I know. It's just the ordinance that gets us up to the, the local statute.
The judging.
For money fees and also for the terms for the town board, for the cemetery board members. Because I don't remember what it was prior, but it had them on like a seven-year term. There was five of them, something like that, you know, so. State statute of laws for three years.
Well, I will make a motion, any further discussion, sorry?
No.
I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 5-2025 and declare it an emergency.
Second.
Motion has been made and sectioned, all is, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. All right. Item 14, consideration discussion and possible action concerning the violation of Title 11, Section 22-111 located at lot 30, lots 1 through 5 of the original town.
I just need to know where to go with it. I get complaints of it. And then I've started sending out mow notices for other properties in town. And I got some flack back for a couple that said they don't feel like they have to mow any town property at some point. I really don't have an argument for it.
Well, I know I have talked to CA a lot in regards to this. And it's, it's every time they start, it's raining.
And it hasn't rained a lot.
Something, something happened. It is still in the works, though.
We talked about it again today to see where he's at. And, and I, I, I mean, this isn't our only town property issue as far as grass. It's, it's one of those years.
It has been really wet.
But, CA, what, what kind of timeframe do you think we're? It, it's all weather dependent because they're going to spray it and then they're going to burn. But if it's going to rain, you can't really put the spray down. It's going to wash down on everybody else's property, which is like a problem.
After Thursday, we're supposed to have a, a late week of getting the pot used. So providing a few of us for next, we can, we can spray. But this is, and we won't be, you know, we won't be that here.
Nice, as long as I have a rebut, when I live.
I mean, if they want to go up and spray it, I mean, I don't hope, I don't think.
I would be unhappy with it. All seeing yourselves.
All that dirt.
All that dirt.
Yeah.
And, and, and we, we did that off, off a dirt car. And Daryl had a mow. And that's what the problem is, is all that stuff that's up on top of it.
Nobody can tell, but. Nobody can move. Dirt, hill, or grass. So, but Daryl did go for a mow.
I guess I should. Hold up there.
Have you seen?
Does it cross that?
Uh-huh.
Any other questions on this line item?
No.
I'm going to let it die and they're going to get it taken care of. Number 15, consideration discussion and possible action concerning the updated purchasing procedure, purchasing process for all departments.
So, I mean, you know, we've been talking about trying to get a purchasing process in place that kind of mimics what the county has. Before anybody goes in, spends any money, they come into the town hall, they get the purchase order, fill it out to the best of their abilities, doesn't have to be perfect. But then at that point, we have an idea of what money is going to be spent, what receipts to keep an eye out for, because we chase receipts a lot. Sometimes we don't even know if something's been purchased until we look at the statement. Makes it really hard to get anything that could be done or any idea of what's going to be on the purchase orders. So then all I have to do is swing by, fill one out, and we'll number it. I don't know, however, after some trial and error, however, if that works best for us.
Well, and this, this may be a thing too, like, you know, you guys could have as a PDF and not have to come by.
Yeah, or fill out like.
You can fill it out on your phone most of the time, sign it and just send it over and not have to worry about town hall.
As long as we have something on file, we're honestly happy. It would just give us an idea of what to keep out for.
Yeah.
Can you send this to us as an our email? Then we'll have it saved up for you. I'll make a motion that we adopt the town of Glencoe repertory.
Motion has been made and sectioned. Now, this will be for all departments. This will be, everybody will use this. Okay. Motion has been made and sectioned, all in favor. Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes. 16, possible executive sessions discuss benefit negotiations concerning Office Secretary Shelley Andrews and Melissa Harrison pursuant to Title 25 OF Section 307 B2. I have a motion.
Did it change anything or is it what?
Well, it's to, to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Does it change anything? I don't have any. I mean, what does it change it to?
Is this something like, can we go into executive session and have Shelley and Melissa come explain the benefits?
Yeah. I like the behavior. I like the motion.
Yeah, that I agree with. Two seconds.
I'll say it.
Motion has been made and sectioned to enter into executive session for benefit negotiations concerning Office Secretary Shelley Andrews and Melissa Harrison. All in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Shawna votes yes.
Two seconds. Okay.
All right, returning from executive session, going to item sixteen, no? Seventeen. Uh, consideration discussion and. There's, so there's really not even an option to discuss what we discussed.
Well, we're not sixteen, I think we tabled it. Yeah, we tabled fourteen.
Well, we had our executive sessions, we tabled it.
We just started taking action, okay. Right, on sixteen, then on seventeen, we do take action.
Okay, uh, seventeen, consideration discussion of possible action concerning the approval of VSP Vision Serv, Vision Insurance and Delta Dental Insurance for full-time employees with the town of Glencoe. So upon discussion, we looked through the option on the VSP and the Delta Dental and the policy. And we would like to consider extending paying in full for the employee-only PPO and Delta Dental. And the option one for VSP, um, Delta Dental is thirty-five dollars a month per employee and the VSP is fourteen forty-six per month with the town paying in full for both. Any thoughts, discussions?
I'll make a motion, we adopt chapter eighteen and seventeen.
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 Yeah, seventeen, seconded.
Okay, motion has been made, made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes, Will.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. All right, eighteen, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approve, uh, approving the update for the Glencoe Personnel Policy Concerning Benefits. So that would be really what we just did, where we're putting into place the Vision and Dental Insurance.
Is there gonna be any incentives for that, Ellen, sure, or is that something we need to maybe bring back?
So, I, uh, when, when do you, when is open enrollment typically happen? Cause I know that you guys historically bring in.
Didn't they change open enrollment to November, or is it still January?
Well, January should be your effective date, so you should enroll.
Okay, so our open enrollment is January?
Yeah.
And those are, ours is different than like most people's, for some reason, they changed it, so it's January.
So your, your year for like your benefit year is, is.
It's calendar.
So you should enroll though, prior to January one.
You should enroll before.
What now?
You should enroll prior to January one, correct?
And then it takes effect.
Yeah.
So historically, I, I, I remember, right, you guys would bring to the table some different insurance options. That's what we would like to do, is shop the options, see what move rocks comes back as for the same plan you guys have and see what options look like. Okay.
Okay, I would say it's November. Cause if you have a few months.
So we would like to not make any change as to the benefit plan pay amounts until we have the new options on the renewal prices.
And I guess that wording doesn't allow for social media section to be updated, then I'll put it on the next one.
Okay. So does that, that make sense, we'll, we'll revisit the benefit amounts whenever we have the premium.
Okay, I'll make a note on my calendar.
So really, there's no action to be taken on item eighteen?
Do we need to add Vision and Dental?
Uh, we did that on seventeen though, because it's already in there. Do we just need to add the thing, the town will pay a hundred percent of benefit?
Well, we probably already just moved Vision and Dental up here. Cause these are optional.
Oh, so move it up in the personnel policy?
Yeah, just, I mean, on, uh, what is it?
Well, it would need to be in a section that's not optional, just benefits provided by the town of Glencoe.
Benefits.
Yeah. So you can do the benefits mandated by federal law and then additional benefits provided by the town. Vision Dental, then optional down below that.
Well, and in real, in reality, the benefits provided also needs to have an annual holiday and sick leave.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, okay, I'll.
I will make a motion that we create a new section in the Employee Fringe Benefits, labeled Benefits Provided by the Town of Glencoe, to include annual leave, sick leave, holiday leave, vision, insurance, and dental insurance.
And pension.
And pension. Now, the health, we paid for portions, so that's gonna be another one that's gonna be in that section, correct?
Right.
So that the, uh, health insurance will go as well, so everything but the life insurance, the life is not a paid, correct?
Well, that was paid in a hundred percent.
Okay, so then optional just needs to come off.
So then, okay, okay.
Okay, so I retract my motion and make a new motion to amend the Employee Fringe Benefit Section B, removing the word optional.
There you go.
Seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. All right, twenty, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving the payment to current construction in the awarded amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred eight dollars for the twenty twenty-five RE grant street project number thirty-three.
We'll get this one closed out early enough that, um, we can apply for a new one with no hiccups like we did last year, having a new engineer.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the payment to current construction in the award amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred eight dollars for the twenty twenty-five RE street grant, RE grant, street project number thirty-three. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Twenty-one, consideration discussion of possible action concerning updating, approving the local planning committee, the local planning activities committee for the O, for the C, D, V, G, CIP grant. Carrie?
I know, it's been one of those days.
So listed on here, we have Alyssa's, town clerk, Shane is water superintendent, myself as mayor, Daryl Rathlin as park manager, and Jeremy Cooper as fire department emergency manager.
The only reason it wasn't finalized and sent off was because they had said something about adding someone from the arena board and then, um, they just never came back and said anything. But Clarissa needs an LPAC committee so that we can move forward with getting the CIP grant done. So we have to have at least five. Um, and I'm fine with it being the way it is, I know Jeremy's still on board. Daryl is up on board for everything, so I know Daryl's still on board.
We need one more.
No, we have five.
I have five, I just didn't know if the arena needed anyone, CA had thrown Jeremy on there a couple meetings ago. So as long as we have five, then I'll let Clarissa know and then she'll get back with us and schedule the, the LPAC meeting, which we will have to make time for.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the list as presented. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item number twenty-two, new business, shall mean that matter which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to time closing. Uh, we did find out today, um, when Randy Clark went to Delta to work to, uh, register for our open seat, that everything did not get turned in appropriately, so we're going to have to push back our special election. So when is filing now?
Um, last day of trial is September nineteenth. And so be the November eighteenth election and the filing dates will be October sixth through eighth.
November, what is the eighteenth? So in the special meeting, that is something that we will have to do, is redo that resolution to have these updated dates on it. Questions, comments, concerns? There is no action to be taken. Uh, item number twenty-three, reports from offices and board members. Anybody got anything? CA, I thought the, the fireworks show went well. Best finale I think that I've seen. That, you know, I shot one, so it was hard to say that, but maybe it is. High ceiling nicely.
Still there.
All right, brings us to item twenty-four. Make a motion, you're.
I'll touch it.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
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 Susan?
Yes.
You might make it home before dark.
Yeah!
They're going, you might make it home before dark tonight. I know. Yeah, it'll be, it'll be quick, you know.
No.
Yeah, it's something else. I will go get it. I'm meant to bring it, I'm sorry. But yeah, just have it.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Actually.
Let that bloody Meredith mark out before they. I don't know if I would've committed to do the work. Been a couple of weeks ago, I probably shouldn't have. This time, I. Yep, I'm down there and hang out, just walking my shoes for a day or two. We'll have to get some different, and then crops and.
He was talking to Shane.
I don't know. Mark's there.
That's what I thought, I wasn't sure. I represented him like twenty years ago. On a couple things.
Sounds good. All right, I'm in the call to order the regular meeting of the Glencoe Public Works Authority held at eight oh four PM on July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, Glencoe Town Hall. Roll call, Terry?
Here.
Skip?
Here.
Susan here, Sean is here, consent agenda, approval of minutes in the regular meeting held on July ninth, twenty twenty-five, and approval of the Public Works Authority purchase orders. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item four, the new point, item five, public appearances, petitions, demonstrations, communications, and personal appearances. Y'all got anything? None. All right, hearing none, we'll move on, possible executive session for the discussion of benefit negotiating concerning Water Superintendent Shane Plain, pursuant to title twenty-five OF section three oh seven E two. I, I don't feel like that's necessary over the time being. So if y'all are good, we'll just table it subject to call. So I'll make a motion to table, table that subject to call. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item seven, consideration discussion of possible action concerning the proposal for notification services for the Glencoe Public Works Authority for Text My Gov. I will make a motion that we accept the proposal for the notification services for Glencoe Public Works Authority from Text My Gov.
Oh, seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item eight, consideration discussion of possible action concerning approving VSP Vision Insurance and Delta Dental Insurance for the full-time employees of the town of Glencoe. I will make a motion that we approve the VSP option one and the Delta Dental PPO, same that we did uh, for the other two employees for Public Works. Seconded. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item nine, consideration discussion of possible action concerning updates to Glencoe Personnel Policy concerning employee benefits. I. I will make a motion that we amend, uh, the Employee Fringe Benefit Section B, optional benefits, to just say benefits provided by the town of Glencoe. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes. Item ten, new business, meeting that could not have been foreseen prior to time. Hearing none, brings us to item eleven.
Make a motion, you're.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, Terry?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Sean votes yes.